I'm going to call this meeting to order. I want to welcome everyone to the Monroe County Council Meeting for tonight, Tuesday, January 14th, 2025, our first meeting of the new year at 5:00 PM here in the Nat U Hill Room at the Monroe County Courthouse. I want to make note that in the room today, we have with us Counselors.
Counselors.
Getting a little... Counselor Wiltz, we've got Counselor Crossley, we have Counselor Iverson, and we all want to welcome our brand-new counselor in his term, Counselor David Henry. Let's give him a round of applause.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard, Counselor. I want to note for the record that Counselor Hawke, I do not believe is with us remotely or in here in the room. I know she's not. All right. With that, and that dispense with, I'd ask everyone if you'd join me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Counselors. We've got next item number three on our agenda is adoption of agenda. I've got a couple of my own motions to make, but before I do, I want to see if any Counselor had in addition to the agenda they wish to offer. Look to my left, look to my right. Learned that from Counselor McKim, a former Counselor McKim who joins us in the audience. I'm going to offer a couple for unanimous consent unless I hear objections. Counselors, I'm going to amend the agenda to add item 8F, appointments to County Council members to certain boards and commissions. Any objection? Hearing no objections, so ordered. And then I also amend the agenda to change item 12 to approval of Resolution 2025-2, a renewal of an inter-local cooperation agreement, amending all subsequent agenda items after that and the previous one. Is there any objection to that being added? Seeing no objections, so ordered. Okay. And I just want to make a note for the public watching this. The reason that we're adding an item for certain County Council members to be appointed to certain boards and commissions and not doing the full slate as we normally would do is because we are still minus one council member. We will have one new council member, and we want to have that new council member come here for a very public-spirited discussion on, maybe not so spirited, I don't know, but January 28th, to talk about those liaison appointments and to weigh in in whichever way they wish to serve for that year. So we'll do a full slate of those at that time and have a fuller discussion. However, some boards and commissions need people in seats right now for quorum purposes and for making things happen, and so we'll do that at that time. I will also note that if there is with the liaison, since we're holding some back, if a department head or an elected official needs something in the meantime, please do not hesitate to reach out to council leadership. Let us know. Grab your favorite member that's your non-liaison, maybe if they're not here, or your existing liaison if they're still in office. Okay? We'll get through it just a little bit longer here. Okay. With that, we have an amended agenda before us, and any other additions to that? All right, seeing none. Counselors, since all members are here in the room, we'll do a voice vote on that. If you agree to this agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing no opposition, the agenda is adopted. We'll next go to item number four, and that is public comment. And public comment is for any item that is not listed on our agenda. We'll have a time limit of three minutes per speaker, and if we have anyone wishing to make that comment, you can do it either here in the room at the podium or via Teams by raising your hand, and we'll call on you. See, Mr. Engie from the chamber is here. Take it away.
Thank you, Chairman Deckard, and thank you, Council, and welcome, Councilmember Henry, for your first meeting of your tenure. We look forward to working with you, and good tidings and happy new year from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. We appreciate Mr. Deckard, who did attend our legislative preview on Friday and who has taken over our Legislative Council that handles the Activities in General Assembly. He took over for longtime Chair, Councilmember Jeff McKim, so we appreciate that. One thing we did bring out during that meeting is our coveted 2025 Legislative Agenda. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. I'm going to leave that with Ms. Shell, but how this works a little bit. So each year, we survey our members on an array of issues, and it's usually just not a very long, 10-minute survey, and we had a little under 200, which was a very good response rate for us. It goes then to the Advocacy Council, who amends its votes on the draft that comes up from that, from the survey, and then it goes to the Board for approval, and voila, here it is. And it doesn't change dramatically every year. But we did add one item that I want to just bring to your attention that was really made a point in our Advocacy Council, which is the support for the expansion of the Monroe County Airport, which we are big partners with, Carlos, and the work he does there. So anything that comes that we can help out on that or any myriad of issues that comes before this body, please let us know. The Chamber sees ourselves as a partner in this community. We want to help any way we can, and I appreciate your time today. Thank you.
Much. All right. If others have comments that you wish to make, come forward to this podium or raise your hand on Teams. Just want to remind the public, all are always welcome to public comment before the council in this, your courthouse, and at that podium or on that Teams link. All right, seeing none. We'll go on to department updates, and this is where we hear from our elected officials and department heads here in the county and department heads. If you want to make an update, come forward in the Nat U Hill, raise your hand on Teams, and we'll get you. Not seeing any. Oh, we got one right over here. How could I miss our auditor? Yes.
Good evening, Council. Just a brief update for you tonight. The 2024 financial transfers and corrections should be completed tomorrow. We kind of gave all departments a last call to get anything necessary into us so we could process. After that period is over, we can go ahead and process those bond encumbrances. As you recall, we only encumber bonds now, and we'll also handle the grant carry-forwards. After that time, after completion of both of those tasks, we can go ahead and get the reversion report to you. So I'm hoping to have that next week, if not the week after. So just a little brief update on when you can expect that information. Additionally, my team is working on revamping the revenue report that you were accustomed to receiving in 2024. So we're just going to consolidate that a little bit, make it more concise, easier to read, and you'll be able to expand and see all the detail yet if you'd like that. So we will have that out to you hopefully next week as well. Thank you.
Questions from Counselors? Look into my left, look into my right. I'll just want to echo, I think, comments we've made before. I appreciate the auditor is doing a diligent job, not just when cameras are on, but at all times, in trying to demonstrate the data on the finances of this county in the clearest way possible with the most overhead and with the philosophy that her name is signed off in all this, and she's making a diligent effort. I think it's making the county better. It's not always easy, but I appreciate us knowing it's easier to know than to guess, and we don't want to guess, so thank you. All right. Any other department head wishing to make an update? Any at all? Okay. Seeing none. We will then move on to council liaison updates. Any Counselor wishing to offer a update here in the first of the year? No? Given our status right now, okay? Yeah?
Yes, D. We have some people waiting in the waiting room. Can you please add them? Thank you.
Second, as they come in, maybe there's someone there that had a department head update.
Ma'am, there's no one in the waiting room.
The link on our agenda goes to something called County Council Meeting and then 2024, which it is not 2024. So I might be the only one who just clicked on the link and sat there, but it's wrong, and I will try to find the right link now.
Okay.
I just went by the calendar, event calendar, and I hit join.
That's cool. I did not do it that way. Mood light.
Give that a second.
Proceed. We don't have to hold it up because of that. It was me.
Oh, we're okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Awesome. Awesome. We did the lights for effect, and now on we go. All right. Any other council liaison, anything? Okay. Well, let's move on to consent agenda items.
Counsel, I move to approve the following consent agenda items. A, the council's request for the creation of a new account line, 36709, ARPA Rule Housing Repair and Fund 1000-0061, County General Counsel. The Building Department's request for a creation of a new account line, 31065, City Interlocal and Fund 7404-0312, City Pass Through. And the summary minutes for September 3rd, 2024, Budget Session 1, September 4th, 2024, Budget Session 2, September 5th, 2024, Budget Session, Work Session 3, September 11th, 2024, Budget Work Session 4, September 12th, 2024, Budget Work Session Number 5, September 19th, 2024, Budget Work Session Number 6, December 10th, 2024, County Council Meeting, and December 17th, County Council Meeting.
Second.
So on consent agenda items, is there any questions on that from Counselors?
Ms. Fraz and I have a question. So you just amended those, correct, to include two additional consent items? Before the meeting?
No.
That's not inclusive?
No, those were added to the overall agenda for tonight.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
You're welcome. Any other questions from Counselors? Okay. What we'll do next is go to public comment on the consent agenda item. If you've got public comment, you'll come forward to this podium in the Nat U Hill or the table if you prefer, or raise your hand on Teams. All right. So seeing none on that, we will do a roll call vote on the consent agenda.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Henry?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right. That takes us to item eight on our agenda. State statute requires us to have our annual organizational meeting at the first meeting of the year, and with that organizational meeting, we have two elected positions, that of President and President Pro Tem Pour. I now open the floor for nominations for President. Counselor Wiltz.
I'd like to nominate Counselor Jennifer Crossley for President.
Got a nomination for Counselor Crossley. Do we have a second?
Second.
Counselor Iverson has seconded it. Counselor Crossley, you accept your nomination?
I do accept.
All right. With that, I'd open this up for any Counselors wishing to make a comment regarding the nomination of Counselor Crossley for President. Counselor Crossley.
I would just say to my colleagues, thank you for the nomination and the second. If I get voted through, I definitely have learned from the bus with previous President Kate Wiltz and our current President Trent Deckard. It's been a pleasure and an honor to serve on this council and learn both from your leadership, and we've gone through a lot this past year in 2024, and I definitely have learned that, you know, you definitely have set the mold for us here and the work to be done, and I want to continue to move us onward with a lot of different things that will be coming our way, and I'm up for the challenge.
Counselor Wiltz.
I probably should have spoken first, but I just want to indicate that I don't know that I've done the nominating for things before, but it feels very good to nominate Counselor Crossley. She's been an amazing colleague, and I'm confident that she can shoulder the weight of the position. I am sad that Counselor Deckard has decided to make it a one-year term, but I know how much of a team player this group already is, you know, already is, how much of a team player you are and the group is. So I think that regardless, we'll still be benefiting from Counselor Deckard's wisdom and his demeanor, which is a calming force on council in many ways. So I'm looking forward to it and excited to see where we go.
Other comments? Counselor Iverson.
I just want to make a point, rather than repeating all the great things that people have said, is that the reason I seconded this nomination was because Councilmember Crossley has served in many capacities and liaison chips to many of the departments that are most likely watching this video and clearly know the type of leader that Councilmember Crossley is and the type of leadership that she will bring to this fiscal body, and I'm certainly excited to see how we progress in this year under her leadership, and I'm very happy and proud to have seconded this nomination for that reason.
Other comments? Counselor Henry.
I would only add that, as I'm only 17 minutes into my term here with all of you, that I've had the good fortune of working with Jennifer in leadership in a very different capacity in our community, and I have no doubt of your ability to lead an organization, and look forward to your chairpersonship or your presidency of our councils. Thank you.
I think all the Counselors have spoken that are with us, and so as last minute, as Chair privilege, I will just speak on the nomination for a second myself. I don't have to repeat how fabulous I think Jennifer Crossley is because everybody in this community knows it. You could walk that direction, that direction, that direction, or that direction, and there will be nary a person that's not something wrong with them that would have nothing but glowing words for her. And in this role, which is, as Kate Wiltz can write the book, there's something to this role where there can be some pressures on it at times, and I have to say that in all the year I did this, my first call was to Jennifer Crossley, who heard a lot of griping, sometimes some swear words, and sometimes some smiling and laughing, and she will be phenomenal because she loves the people of this county just like she loves her district, and I'm so excited for her to see my friend do this. All right. With that, I think we now go to a roll call on this, correct? All right. We will call the roll.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Henry?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
All right. Let's give a round of applause for our new Chair. Oh, okay. All right. If you insist. Here we go. Counselors, you got me one more here. I now open the floor for nominations for our President Pro Tem Pour.
Mr. President, I have a nomination.
Please.
It's my privilege to nominate Peter Iverson for President Pro Tem Pour.
Second.
Got a motion to second? Would you like to speak on the nomination?
Mr. President, thank you. I've had the good fortune knowing Peter for several years now with a few different hats, and I admire your addition and commitment to the community. I think it shows in the work ethic you bring to this body as well as the liaisons and commissions that you've served on over the past few years in our community, so it's a great privilege to hand the Pro Tem seat to you and knowing that you're in reserve there to help us get through our meetings and get through the term the next year. So thank you, Peter, for considering. I hope you'll consider it.
Do you accept this nomination?
I do accept this nomination.
He accepts. Awesome. Other Counselors to speak on the nomination of Peter Iverson? Counselor Wiltz.
I will just second the second and say that Peter is an ideal candidate, and he's the obvious choice. He's put heart and soul into his work here in county government, and we are the better for it.
Crossley.
Yeah. I'm looking forward to this leadership and doing this alongside Counselor Iverson. I think he's definitely ready for it, and he's built for this moment, so looking forward to it.
I'll just say I'm exceedingly excited to see you come officially into council leadership. Your energy and your stamina for it and your ideas, sort of as I was president this year, were sort of a metronome. It was to say, we got to keep up on this and do this and got to do that, and I appreciate that because we need that fresh eyes, fresh energy, and I'm excited to see you do that from a different vantage point. I know it's going to be awesome. Okay? Any other discussion? All right, seeing none. Let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Henry?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Congratulations.
I'm deciding. I think I can be on your right.
Okay. This is exciting. I get to sit in the big people's seat. I'm a big girl now. All right. So you got me. And I promise this meeting will move just as swift as Counselor Deckard has continued to do this, but before we go into our agenda, I don't want to hold us before long because we have items on our agenda and we got members of the public that are here. I would be remiss if we did not recognize once again Counselor Deckard for the service that he has brought to the council. As I mentioned, last year was very pivotal in a lot of ways, and we started on shaky grounds and we left on shaky grounds, but through and through, we always had our friend Trent Deckard that led us through a lot of different things with the conversation of a new justice facility, just civility conversations in general. You were always there with your Trentisms that we always like to hear in every meeting, and I wish I had a book to write those out. And yes, so a lot of times when we did have conversations, you were that calming voice of the council, and we are forever grateful for you and all the work that you continue to do because as a former, as a child of a, what is it you say? Court reporter, you have done great things. So we appreciate that, and not to mention, we have this lovely token of appreciation for you on behalf of council as well as council staff, and this is a plaque for you because you are so deserving of this award and this recognition. So we just wanted to give our friend that. So if folks can give us a round, or give you, rather, a round of applause. Now, for the moment that we all are ready for is back to business. So with that being said, we are moving on after we've moved on through our elections here. We do have an acknowledgment of citizen appointment resignation. Mr. Eric Spoonmore, that was the council's appointee to the Capital Improvement Board, also known as the CIB, has sent his letter of resignation to our office, and we are receipt of that, and so if there are any, no objections from the council, I would like to go ahead and accept that.
We're allowed to object? I'm just kidding.
Seeing no objections? Okay. All right. We are accepting the resignation, and we also thank Mr. Spoonmore for his service to the CIB. He was a very vocal appointment to the CIB, and I know that even though he won't be in the seat, he definitely will continue to keep light of the project that we are all eager about. All right. Moving on, we have, the council has several boards and commissions that require assistance from our county citizens. Please note today that, oh, am I? Okay. I'm right. All right. So we have noted today that one of our Convention and Visitors Commission appointments would like to continue on, and that is also added to our, next item on our agenda. And also would like to let everybody know that we do have three vacancies that are needing willing citizens, and so those vacancies are an appointment to the Environmental Commission with a two-year term. The Sophia Travis Grant Committee also is looking for a citizen of the county to be a part of that as well. And we also have, now that we have our one person that would like to continue on, instead of having two vacancies to the Convention and Visitors Commission, we have one vacancy, which is also a two-year length term. So please, if you are interested and you are watching or you will watch the recording via CATS or however you will watch this, please know that you can go to co.munro.in.us and click on Community and click on Boards and Commissions page so that you are able to do your civil engagement and be a part of our board and commissions. All right. Next up, we have the appointment or reappointment to the citizen members to some of our boards and commissions.
Counsel, I move to approve the following citizen member appointment or reappointment of the Alcoholic Beverage Commission, Anthony Satilli, one year. Next new term date is 12/31/2025. The Convention and Visitors Bureau, which the President just talked about, Kirby Brown, a two-year term length, starting on 12/31, or ending on 12/31/26. Economic Development Commission, Fred Schultz, a four-year term. Parks and Recreation Board, Evelyn Harrell, a four-year term. Redevelopment Commission, Colin McCarty, a one-year term. Redevelopment Commission, Iris Kiesling, a one-year term. Women's Commission, Maria Douglas, a two-year term. And finally, the Capital Improvement Board, Mr. Jeff McKim, a two-year term.
Second that.
All right. We got a motion and a second. Are there any questions from the Council regarding our appointments? Looking to my right here, gentlemen. Counselor Iverson?
I just want to echo what our President said, that these are very important bodies that people need to be sitting on, and we currently do have vacancies in other commissions. I want to thank each and every one of these members for serving their community. Many of you have served the community already for a long time, and I would just want to express our deep felt gratitude for the ways that you are making our community even better.
And looking to my left, any comments, questions? Counselor Deckard?
I have no question, just support for the list, and I would just make a note, I'm pleased to see all these good names of folks in the community coming forward. We always need more, but one in particular I want to thank is Counselor Jeff McKim, who literally, or former Counselor Jeff McKim, it'll take me a year to get that, who wasted no time in stepping forward to serve the community in a different capacity, and that is awesome. What a gift of experience that will be, and if you are a person at home and you think that maybe there's something you want to figure out and do, this is what we need folks to do, so appreciate all these good folks.
Counselor Wiltz?
I will say, I wish I had this in front of me, and this is usually Jeff McKim's role, but the Convention and Visitors Commission appointment has several requirements associated with it. So if you are a hotelier in the county or a hotel manager of an establishment with a certain number of beds that I can't remember, that's who we really need to step forward and... forward and serve. So we'll be looking specifically on that, that opening. The other openings are open for the public and anyone is welcome to apply.
All right, yes. And definitely thanks to many people that, on this list here that are stepping up and serving the community. And special thank you to former council member Jeff McKim for not getting rid of county government yet and continuing forward with serving on the CIB. So we will go ahead and have a roll call because just for the public who might ask, well, why don't you do public comment? We don't do public comment when it comes to appointments to boards and commissions. So Michelle, if I can ask for a roll call.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Henry?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Thank you again. All right, now we are moving to item 8F, which was added to the agenda earlier. And we normally, at the first meeting when we do our organization meeting when we elect our officers, we also go through liaison ships. And because we are not a full council yet, as it was mentioned, that we are missing one council member and hopefully we'll have that person here for our next meeting on the 28th. We are gonna do things a little differently. We have some two council appointment seats that are to particular planning commissions and boards, or commission and boards, that we need to fill with our council members here so that it doesn't affect quorum and they can continue to conduct business as much as possible. So without further ado, council, I would like to nominate Counselor David Henry to the Planning Commission and Counselor Wiltz to the Waste Reduction District Board as the 2025 council representatives.
Second.
Counselors, would say you about your nominations? Do you accept? And looking to my left, Counselor Wiltz?
I accept.
And Counselor Henry?
I accept.
All right. May I please have a roll call vote on this? Oh, sorry. Did the mess up. Would you like to make a comment about your? Anybody would like to make a comment about these nominations?
Thank you, and I look forward to learning as much as contributing on this.
Thank you for the trust of the council to take on a heavy responsibility 34 minutes into my term on the Plan Commission. I look forward to engaging in the discussion as we await the decisions of Indianapolis and the fate of how we generate revenue and income off of our, our parcels in our community. So we have a lot ahead of us in the year on Plan Commission. Thank you for the trust.
You for stepping up and leading the way. All right, now without further ado, may we please have a roll call vote?
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Henry?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
You, thanks again. All right, we are moving right along in our agenda. And next up, we are at item number nine.
President Crossley?
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I have a clarification on the last item is, could I please? Thank you. The, the liaison ships, if that's a word, that we had in 2024, we will continue to serve through the appointments at our next meeting. Is that correct?
Correct, correct.
All right.
So, yes, thank you for pointing that out. So at our next meeting, we will be, if it's not clear to the public and if it's not clear to our council here and for Counselor Huck in her absence, I'm sure she'll watch later, that we will make some changes to liaison ships at the January 28th meeting.
Thank you, thank you. Just wanted to make sure the next couple of weeks, there are some meetings. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you for that. All right, now we move on to item number nine.
Counsel, I move to approve the sheriff's request and fund 1156000 firearms training, a new account line, 21060 training supplies, and simultaneously approve an additional appropriation in the amount of $50,000 in the supplies category.
Second.
Second.
Thank you.
We got a motion and a second, I see, Mr. Miller. Hi.
Good evening, council. Jordan Miller, financial coordinator for the sheriff's office, filling in for my colleague Jamie Yonkey. We've had some discussions with members of the auditor's office and determined that previous, in prior years, expenses have been made for ammunition coming from services as well as capital expense lines. And so we, with discussions with the members of the auditor's office, we've determined that it'd be most appropriate to create a training supplies line within our supplies category and simultaneously to add $50,000 for the projected expenses of ammunition and other essential training supplies.
Thank you. And open it up for a discussion. Any questions for Mr. Miller from council? Go ahead, Mr. Iverson.
I'll get it started. Thank you for being here tonight and for what you all do for our community. My question is not about the creation of the lines, that makes complete sense to me. But it seems like the, the fund is fairly healthy with a good cash balance. Why are we requesting so much, you know, $50,000 for additional training? Is, is that because there's additional staff that needs that training? Is that because we're anticipating more people coming in there going to the training? Kind of help us understand what this is gonna mean for the future year.
Sure. And I apologize, I'm not the most well-versed in this topic, but it's my understanding that in previous years, we received funding for things of this sort and we've been able to, to move these, this funding accordingly within this 1156 firearms fund. I believe now we're required to come to a meeting in order to make expenses of this sort. So it's my understanding that there's a need, that this is the projected value or expense that would be coming from this supplies line. And there might be, I mean, I'd gladly get additional information on the subject, but that's my understanding and my knowledge.
Counselor Wiltz?
I think this is a similar question. So you might not have the answer and maybe the auditor has an answer, but, because you mentioned you had been in discussion, but it does seem like we just appropriated money for, for training supplies in your last budget and that included ammunition, which is listed here. So I guess I'm curious as to why in January, this is coming before us typically, I mean, I know it's not like we can't fund more things, but I felt like we kind of put to bed your, your needs for 2025 with the last budget. So it, is there, is there a reason that we, that there's an additional appropriation needed right now instead of a transfer from maybe what we intended to be in this category?
And again, I'm, unfortunately, I'm filling in, but we did reach out to members of council and maybe Ms. Shell can speak to this, but associating the additional appropriation, given the fact that, like I said, in previous years, my understanding is that Fund 1156, we, we received funding for this and we're able to move expenses accordingly based on a need. And then in recent, it's my understanding that recent changes have been made that require us to, to move funds to various account lines based on a need. We came to you, I came to you in one of the recent meetings and of course, we did, we had approximately, I believe it was $10,000, a little over $10,000 worth of expenses for ammunition and training supplies. And we had been, you know, that was a portion of the year. Based on previous financial reports and budgets, we were under the, I'm under the impression that $50,000 was the approximate need within that line.
You're, you're nodding your head, so that tracks for you, is what I'm guessing.
Yes, that's, I didn't work directly with Mr. Miller or, or Jamie on this issue, however, that is my understanding. There's just a greater need at this time that is recognized from, that has been identified since budgeting.
And is there a budgeting, accounting reason that they wouldn't just then do an in-house transfer to fill this line with what we've appropriated for training supplies already in our budget?
I'm not sure why we chose to do an additional appropriation here rather than a transfer. I can look into that and see what advice my staff has given here. I'm sorry, I'm not completely up to speed on this one.
And if I may interject, Ms. Yonkey reached out and a member of the council, like I said, there was, there's email communication here that states if this wouldn't be an appropriate move in addition to obviously the creation of the line, that we could certainly consider removing that request. And then maybe Ms. Shell can speak to it, but she, a member of her office of council, I should say, well, the auditor's office, excuse me, has stated, confirmed that this request is for a fund that we can appropriate. And again, maybe this might not be the most appropriate approach. However, like I said, my understanding is that we have money within Fund 1156 and we have identified a need for this $50,000 coming specifically from this training supplies line.
I, I want to say, I think there's some confusion with regards to, this is a standalone fund that they receive money in. When you talk about budgeting, they're, during the budget process, they did budget in a certain fund, which I can't remember which one it is, for ammunition and that, and training, that kind of thing, I think is what you're actually speaking about, Counselor Wiltz. So I think we need to look at the budgets that have been approved and what was approved. And I think that's what you're saying is why are we double budgeting in two different funds for the same thing?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's my understanding, as I mentioned initially, and again, my apologies for the confusion on this, the subjects as a whole, but it's my understanding that funds were appropriated within a miscellaneous expenses, which is a services line, as well as an equipment line, which is a capital line. And then speaking with the financial director, of course, in recent years and based on kind of the, the financial reports that we had available to us upon stepping into these positions, we were able to determine that these had been routinely paid out of account line 36050 miscellaneous expenses as well as 40001 equipment. And it was, that was deemed an inappropriate location. And so maybe, this may have been more appropriate to have maybe the, the discussion of the deappropriation of funds specific to those lines and more of, and I apologize again for, for the confusion.
If I may, I think we are talking about two different things here, so the two separate funds. And I think this is specific to training in this fund. And it was previously, we just wanted it to be a little bit more transparent as to what this funding is for, what we're budgeting. So we suggested a more appropriate line for that transparency and an appropriate category for this fund. Now, I can't speak to the need necessarily, but I can do a little research and, and provide what my team discussed.
I'm all about the transparency and the establishment of a new account line. My question is, as Michelle was saying, a little bit more about, didn't we already budget for your training supplies? And if so, why wouldn't we just be doing a transfer rather than an appropriation? So this fund, what is the, the source of this fund?
Don't have that information.
I know you don't, I'm sorry, I'm asking them, I know you don't. I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I'm just trying to better understand.
Is it, if so, let me, I can do a quick search here. For any other members of council have any questions? For Mr. Miller? Counselor Deckard?
I, I had maybe a comment question while the auditor's doing her thing or someone else's. The, earlier I had a little bit of a soliloquy about the auditor's efforts on transparency. And I guess my question is, is this, or my comment, is this around a little bit more of that in kind of doing the correct line transparently and the right process, et cetera?
Yes, we want to use the correct line. I think now we're, I think Counselor Wiltz is more interested in why we're providing additional funding rather than transferring. But yes, our, our main purpose, my office, the, I think the only advice we provided was with regard to the account line. So as far as the additional funding necessary, I don't know that I can help with that, but I can certainly look to see the communication between the two offices.
Yes, and I believed it to be just funds received within the fund and that we would be required to appropriate those specifically based on recent changes to this account line. So, I mean, I don't believe it's necessarily a request for additional funds. It's my understanding that the funds are housed in Fund 1156. And then as of recent changes, we're required to request that funds are, you know, placed in the appropriate account based on need.
And I'm actually looking over, Ms. Molly Turner King has her hand up and she looks like she's jumping at, making a comment here.
I think some of the funds that the sheriff's office receives for ammo specifically comes from the Indiana Criminal Justice Institute. I think it was in 2021, the 2021 legislative, the ICJI was charged distributing funds to try to backfill the revenue that was lost by police agencies when they eliminated the fees for handgun permits.
That's all coming back to us. Okay, got it. All right. Any other questions or comments from council? All right, seeing none. We are moving now forward with public comment of this discussion. Anybody that has public comment that is here present, please come forward to the lecture and then at U Hill Room or raise your hand on teams. Going once, going twice. All right. Seeing none, maybe please have a roll call vote.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Henry?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, now we are moving forward with item 10 from the Highway Department.
Counsel, I move to approve the Highway Department's request and fund 1197-000 Stormwater Management for a new account line, 11066 Stormwater Technician, and to simultaneously approve additional appropriation of $84,752 in the Personnel category. As a remainder, reminder, excuse me, this position was approved by the council on November 12th, 2024.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Ridge.
Good evening. So we were going through when we did budget hearings, we created the line, excuse me, but we didn't have what the classification would be, so we didn't have the amount. So we would like to appropriate that amount. I did reach out to Kim a little, about an hour ago. The cash fund balance, I, I'm not sure where that number comes from, but that's way low. We probably have $4 million as a cash balance in that account, so.
Thank you. All right, looking to my council here for any questions or comments for Ms. Ridge. Counselor Iverson?
We've been through this pack a couple of times on this position and I've vocalized my support for this. I think this is absolutely necessary. We've been over and over how big of a flooding problem we have here in this community and climate change is gonna make it worse. I just, I'm such a huge supporter of, of this. And I, I know that we are right today working on getting this done. Do we, we have someone in this position currently or we're working on it?
Well, we did. So we've had a lot of change in the Stormwater Division. Kelsey Thetonia had gave her notice back in November. We have been doing some interviews and, so we've actually moved up Erica Penya in the department. She's been, she was under Kelsey for three years. So she became our new Stormwater Program Manager as of Monday, January 13th. So that moved our technician that also, he, Greg worked for CBU, I think 20-plus years. He came to us as a truck driver about a year ago. We knew he had potential to provide the department more with his previous knowledge of utilities. So he took the technician job and then when Erica moved to Stormwater Project Program Manager, we moved Greg into the inspector position because that was more of what he had experience in. And then we have an interview tomorrow with an outside candidate for this technician position. position, so.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
It's a lot of changes.
It is a lot of changes, it's good changes. Kelsey did a lot of good for the department for four years. And again, Erica worked under her for three years. She knows our goals, she knows our process, she knows the stormwater board, their priorities. So it's, it's a benefit to the department to be able to promote within and to good candidates.
I'm sorry you lost a good employee, but I'm glad you had even more in the, to come up and work with you there, so, thanks.
Counselor Deckard?
I just want to, this is the only item I think we have of yours before us, and I want to say, while you're here, not necessarily on stormwater, but I have a comment on that in just a second. But I want to thank you for everything that your folks have done and on our roads in the last two, feels like 23 weeks, that this is, this has been one of those white Januaries that is a little bit more profound. And I know that there's a lot of stress and headaches that every one of your persons, especially you, takes to bed with you and up in your mornings and every text message that comes in. And I just want to say, I appreciate that very much. In addition to all those things that you manage, and this gets into the stormwater, you also manage the hiring of people and then emergencies and all this, this stuff. And it's, that's a lot, Lisa Ridge. And I just want to say that that doesn't get unnoticed by people. I also want to say to the people in the community, I sometimes watch, sometimes I think if we got rid of Facebook and other social media, there might not be as much crying as we think. Sometimes I watch comments on road conditions, and I think people are looking for something from the divine and not necessarily something with a plow in front of it. Folks, you got to be careful out there. I mean, these are good folks doing talented things, but they cannot literally make a miracle happen at one in the morning out on a lonely country road with only a barbed wire fence to the right and maybe a couple fleeing cows to the left. Folks, be reasonable with our teams out there and let's make their job as easy as possible. And I sometimes look at Facebook comments and I think, now, did you all talk like that at home in front of your mom or whoever? So I would just thank you very much for all of that, because I know it's a lot, and I know that you act like it's not a lot, but it's not unseen, and thanks for all that, Lisa. I appreciate it.
I appreciate it. It's the crews that are out there, they did a great job. I mean, this was two storms within about five days. And in between those two storms, it's restocking sand and it's reordering salt, it's working on equipment, it's still plowing the roads, it's graveling the roads and getting ready for the next storm. We haven't had a storm like this in a few years, so I don't think the public was really used to it. The guys worked long hours, continuous hours, and it was a very, it's very expensive, two storms that we had. If you add up our material and our labor and our equipment use, it's a half a million dollars in six days. That was, equipment, it's not necessarily paying that out, but the labor and the materials, you know, you were looking at labor $130,000 for just those few days, and our materials was $140,000, and it's just January 14th. So it makes me nervous moving forward on what the rest of the winter is going to be, but we will continue to do our best. I think the biggest complaint we have is about subdivisions. Those are not our top priority. Our main roads have to be our priority until we can get to subdivision roads. But our guys are working long hours. If they've put snow in front of a driveway, they didn't do it on purpose. I answered the phone for dispatch a few times. I don't know how our dispatcher does it, I honestly don't. Took a lot of yellings, I took a lot of cussings, and he does on a daily basis. It's, it's tough, but the guys do a great job, and I think they did the best with what they had, and I couldn't commend them more than for what they did.
Thank you.
Also, to get back to what we were discussing here, thank you to Ms. Penya for stepping up. And also, this just goes to show how much the highway department is valued, because even though we lost an employee, you're still getting to promote from within. And I know how that feels when you're able to stay within, you know, a department that you love. So I appreciate that and good luck on your interview. And definitely shout out to you all and highway department, because it's no easy task, and I had lots of constituents, you know, and we're all trying to give grace, so I appreciate all your efforts. All right, looks like Counsel Wiltz.
To Counselor Deckard's point, how many, remind me how many miles of roads you are overseeing and needing to take care of?
Little over 700, about 705.
And how many trucks are out at any given time when you've got the full-on snow?
Around 40. They all have assigned routes. We have a couple, we do pickup trucks mainly in subdivision areas that we can get into. But 700 miles, they usually average, say 20 miles on a route. Some are smaller because, you know, if you're going down to Hunter's Creek Road to put sand on the road, and that's, you know, it's a 45-minute drive, and drive back to the garage and, and get more materials. So it's just at, you know, we're not within a little, you know, a small city area or anywhere. It's just, you know, it's 700 miles spread out amongst the whole county, so it's just a lot to go back and forth, so.
Well, your efforts are greatly appreciated.
Thank you. See, the auditor has her hand up. Just a quick correction on the fund balance. The cash balance as of the 7th should have been $4,595,861.67. Thank you. Thanks, about I had a heart attack, missing $4 million there. Please don't. All right, any other comments or questions? All right, seeing none. This is time for public comment on this agenda. If you have any questions or comments, or comments, rather, please come forward to the lectern in the Nat U-Hill Room and/or raise your hand via teams. Seeing none in the Nat U-Hill Room and seeing none on teams, we will now go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Henry?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
All right, thank you, Ms. Ridge. Thank you. Now moving right along to item number 11. Looks like we have the Youth Services Bureau.
Counsel, I move to approve the Youth Services Bureau request in Fund 1114-0166, Lit Special Purpose YSB, a new account line, 16800, Transitional Temporary Training Position, and to simultaneously amend the 2025 salary ordinance to include the new account line to allow training for a period of 10 weeks at 10 hours per week.
Second. All right, we got a motion in a second, and I do not see anybody from the Youth Services Bureau, but Ms. Shell has her hand up.
Yes, Director Thavon, Thavon Bat now contacted me, and she was unable to make the meeting tonight. So she asked me if I would just present for her. And this is a setup that the council has approved that allows the overlap of an outgoing employee and the incoming new employee to give that new employee that training that they need. And so this just allows us to add that account line to their budget and add that account line to the salary ordinance so that we can make payment to that person. So that's what this is for.
Got it. Thank you. And now, do we have any questions or comments from council? Looking to, all right, Ms. Iverson?
This is just so important. You know, we've got all these kids that are needing this, this service, and we've got some very highly trained professionals working over at the YSB, and having this system set up, I think, is so important to help transition so that the services to these, these minors is not interrupted. So I think this is a great thing.
Counselor Deckard?
I would say, and Jeff McKim is here, so I'll repeat something I heard him say numerous times, that this is something we now have a history with. For a few years, we have done that. One thing I will say, I hate to take something good and caution it with something bad, but I've been saying this for a number of meetings now, and I want to say it again, is that we are allowed to do this because we have been very good in managing our money and being good stewards of our taxpayer dollars. I mean, some may disagree with that, but you have to look at that rainy day fund and the Long Term Finance Committee reports we get from FSG, and it backs it up, and we've been able to also take care of employees, and we, hopefully we're minimizing vacancies. One thing I'll say is, if changes happen at the state level, when the, while the legislature's in session, if changes happen with the way that we are able to use our revenue here at the local level, and that's every locality, things like this, which are nice things to do but weren't around 20 years ago or so, will be things that we will not be able to do. And I say that not to be the downer, but I say it because the General Assembly is in session. And while it is very convenient to say, yes, we've got to do things to make a low tax climate and all that, when the ambulance is needed, when someone is needed in this training position, when someone is needing managing those youth services, it's local government that does it. The state's not sending the ambulance, we are. We're doing these things with others, with partners and all that. So I just offer that because we, there may be a day where we're not able to do these things. And I'm glad to vote yes now on this, but I've got my eye on everything up there with real cautionary tell, so thank you.
The word. All right. And I'll just go ahead and say, yes, this is something that it seems like we are now in a routine of doing, and I appreciate this because oftentimes when you see people that leave out, sometimes that knowledge goes with them. And this is an opportunity for the outgoing person to be able to train this person as well and get all that knowledge in before they shift. So I appreciate that, thank you, and definitely in support of this. All right, now that we are all done here, we go to the public. If there is any public comment, please come to the lectern here in the Nat U-Hill Room or raise your hand via teams. And seeing no member here or on teams, we now will go to our roll call vote.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Henry?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Thank you. And now we are going to the next item that we added, which is for the legal department.
Counsel, I move to approve Resolution 2025-02, Renewal of the Interlocal Cooperation Agreement Between the City of Bloomington and Monroe County Regarding Building Code Authority.
Second. Motion in a second. Now, Ms. Molly Turner King.
So Resolution 25-2 will extend our current building interlocal, which we've had with the city since 1996, for the first six months of 2025. And I believe the intent is during those six months, we're going to revisit the interlocal and make any necessary changes, but this was just to give us the extra time to continue working on it.
All right, going to council comments, Counselor Wiltz.
Yeah, how, when we do renew this typically, how long is the term?
So, from what, the history that I know of it was when it was originally passed, when the interlocal was originally passed in 1996, it was a five-year term. And then it's been, I believe, renewed in like terms since 1996. So five years, but I mean, that's subject to change. And I believe Mr. Schilling is handling the negotiations with the city for the interlocal.
Okay, great, thank you. Counselor Henry?
Thank you, Ms. Turner King. So have you had communications with the city's legal department about the timeline in the six months as we're, in terms of revisiting and planning for the longer version? As I understand it, the city's department is a little understaffed in their legal department right now? Is there any indication of delay in that conversation?
I have not personally had any conversations with city legal. I know Mr. Schilling has been working on it, and I'm happy to get an update from him and send it to all of you.
Thank you, obviously asking, the clock's ticking, and, and getting some insight into their workload may help us understand how quickly these six months will go, so, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council? All right, seeing none. We will now move to public comment. If there are any public commenters that want to take up this issue, please come forward to the lectern here and then at U-Hill Room or raise your hand via teams. And seeing none for either, may we please have the roll call vote?
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
All right, thank you very much. And I cannot believe this, but we are at, oh, sorry. Before we do, we have Ms. Molly Turner King with her hand up, yes.
There is one other thing that I would like to propose to council tonight for quick consideration or input thought. Typically, council does a contract with FSG Financial Solutions Group. They have sent us a proposed contract, and I will send it out so that you all see it, and then we can talk about it at our next council meeting, hopefully. But one thing that I wanted to kind of see what council appetite was, would be for, is typically that contract is a one-year term. I think they're open to expanding it to a longer term, and I didn't know if that's something you would like me to explore.
But so, I see other hands up, but I want to reference some of the things that Council Member Deckard has been saying, is there's a lot of uncertainty in this budget year, and I think this might be the right time to start looking into that multi-year contract. Now, it devils in the details, so let's see what that pertains, but everything that we're hearing now is a little cause for a little concern in the future, and they'd be great partners to have to help figure out how to handle a multitude of scenarios, but particularly the worst ones.
Counsel Wiltz?
I agree. I think being able to count on them for more than just the next 12 months is a, is a really good idea. We, they, they were extremely helpful. I wasn't on that committee, but even so, the products that they presented, especially around funding the jail and that tax and all of that, made our jobs a little bit easier, just being able to better understand the future and possibilities and what we can count on and what we can't count on. And things are not going to get any clearer as we move forward. So, yeah.
Counselor Henry?
Thank you, Mr. King. Again, maybe I'll put my rookie shoe in my mouth here for a moment, but I'll give it a shot. In, first of all, have there been examples in the past of contracting with FSG that have been beyond a year, or has it been a year, two years?
It's always been a year.
Are there opportunities to create a contract vehicle that allows for the county to option? Like I say, it was a five-year contract, but the second through 50 years would be option years if we wanted to continue. That would give a potential out, but again, if that's not an instrument that's available at the county level, I...
We usually don't include that kind of clause in our contract, but there is always a modification or termination clause, which would allow for mutual agreement to end the contract early if that were the case.
Given, given the comments of the fellow counselors about the fiscal climate to come, yeah, just trying to explore some opportunities for how we can both retain and also execute a need to end the contract depending on revenue. It was just a thought at this hour I had. Thank you for entertaining the question.
Counselor Deckard?
The only thing I was going to say, when we started talking about FSG and Long Term Finance Committee, when that sort of resumes, one thing we did last year was make the Long Term Finance meetings, some of them, I'd recommend more of them, be double advertised as potential for full council slash members of the committee, because they were such educational sessions. And I think if ever there was a time to have that knowledge and to figure it out wisely, that might be, might be the venue to do it. Some of that information is, is just so key, as Counsel Wiltz said, to, here are your options, they're not the clearest options, but at least you know the ones that you can and cannot do and consider.
All right, yes, and I am definitely in favor of us looking at this. And for all things that all council members have said, what state house and state legislators do, especially what they're trying to do right now, will have a deep impact and a fiscal impact on this particular county. And what has an impact on this particular county could also impact what we are able to do for different departments. And we have to be able to sustain those things, and I was fortunate enough to be able to learn a lot when we had that jail tax conversation from FSG, and I appreciate that, and definitely look forward to more of those conversations. from FSG and I appreciate that and definitely look forward to more of those conversations. So yes, I'm definitely in favor of you looking into this contract.
All right. Well, it sounds like I'm going to get a draft together and I'll get it to FSG for consideration and we'll probably add it to the next agenda.
Okay. Thank you. Now, for the moment that we all have been waiting for, maybe, it is counsel comments. So I'm going to look to my left here and see if there are any counselors that would like to make a comment. Counselor Wiltz?
I'll go ahead and get started. We received an email this afternoon from our HR Department for, as it's commonly known anyway, and Seth Elgar. And they've been doing a lot of really great things. I just want to do a shout out to them because they, it really shows that we've invested in that department. And anyway, my point is that email talked about tax assistance. It's that time of year where we start, well, some people start thinking about filing their taxes. And he was pointing out in the email that the United Way is offering free community tax services. So if you're an individual in the community, particularly making less than, I think, $67,000 in a year, you are, might be eligible to have free tax preparation. And go to the United Way of South Central Indiana's website to find out more information about that. I just thought I'd throw that out there beyond just county government, listener. And the other thing is it's mid-January, which means that MLK Day is coming up. And while I'm not the most experienced person with all the different ways that you can make that your day on as opposed to your day off, I do want to remind people that that is the spirit of the holiday. Please keep that in mind. And if you are unsure of how to contribute on MLK Day, go to BloomingtonVolunteerNetwork.org. They always have a lot of opportunities listed and just pick one that looks interesting. Give it a shot.
And they fill up fast, so sign up to like today.
I just wanted to amend what I said to Ms. Ridge earlier to add in also our first responders, our gratitude to them out there hitting whatever comes up. I'm always amazed when I'm shoveling my driveway and worrying about things, which is generally how it happens, my to-do list and what needs to be done. I'm always amazed at how often I'm hearing a siren at the exact same time. And that tells me particularly in those moments that folks are trying to figure out the un, figure-outable. And I appreciate very much all those folks too. And I hope with weakened weather that it's normal weather and we get a new council member on Sunday. I know Councilmember Henry appreciate that too. But we think of those folks too who do all those things and don't, they're not off.
Looking to my right here.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to lift up the work of the Bloomington Severe Winter Shelter this evening. The temperatures are low and the opportunity for the temperatures to go low again in front of their storm to hit us is a possibility. And so what I want to do today is just lift up another way for folks to get involved. If you are able to volunteer, they are in need of volunteers and there's an upcoming volunteer training. You can find that on their Facebook page. And if time is not something you're able to give, then they are in need of materials. And if the Bloomington Severe Winter Shelter is not your thing either, there's quite a few opportunities to help those who are struggling with housing during this cold weather. The United Way Partner Agencies are a great way to look at that. And I will also mention that even this winter shelter is only 30 beds. So what I would recommend that folks do is make sure to sign up so that you know what the emergencies are and what the alerts are by signing up for resident alerts on the county's homepage and also follow the Monroe County Emergency Management Department on social media and on their webpage. That way you are staying alert as to what is coming into our community and you can prepare so that we can come together and serve those who are in need at any time. And I encourage, I just want to thank you for being part of our community and volunteering to help others.
Counselor Henry?
Thank you, Madam President. I would echo the sentiments of my colleagues in thanking not only the Highway Department and EMA, but all of our partners that were engaged in the snow emergency or the beginning of the month. I will add another layer to that to thank those second responding communities. Counselperson Iverson mentioned is those communities, our nonprofit organizations, our faith-based partners that provide shelter and services to the community and the public for staying off the roads and if you don't have to go anywhere, not going anywhere to make the work of Highway EMA and our public safety partners efficient and getting us back on our feet. As you all know, of course, many of those NGO and NGO partners are recipients of our Sophia Travis Grant Program proceeds. And it's just another example of the good work that our whole community does in times of crisis. Secondly, I'd like to raise awareness to the community. Another activity that's going on in the month of January, aside from the Martin Luther King Holiday Weekend, is that it is National Human Trafficking Prevention Month in the United States. It's a month that's recognized over the past decade. This is the 10th year of recognizing that activity in the United States. We tend to think of human trafficking as something that occurs at a border, but here in Indiana in 2023, there are 189 victims of human trafficking cases in our state with a complete interstate that runs through our community. It's important to keep eyes and ears for those that might be victims of child labor, sex trafficking, and other abuses of labor trafficking in our community. You can learn more about that through the National Human Trafficking Hotline. That phone number for folks, if you do see something, is 1-888-373-7888. Or work with non-law enforcement partners and interventions like through DCS and of course, Middleway House in our community that is a first stop for reporting and helping those that may be victims of human trafficking. I know it's a somber note to end on, but I think it's important to raise in our community any opportunity we have. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. All right. I'll go last because I guess that's what I do. So I just want to again say thank you all for allowing me to be seated in this position. And it's no surprise that as the person of color here, and this is a pivotal moment. And I thought about that today as today is my, would have been my grandmother's 102nd birthday. So I know the ancestors are definitely looking and hoping to see me through this. So I appreciate that. And we got some work to do. We got a lot of stuff that is coming along the pike, as it has been mentioned so many times during this meeting, which is why more so than ever before that we and county government should really band together. The past is behind us and we, I'm looking forward to working with the commissioners and really trying to put together forth this unbreakable bond that we've been trying to build over the years and continue to do because we have more things alike than we have in differences because we have a lot that is at stake in the State House. Whether it is education, our LGBTQ+ community, or even our own community, folks are coming at us and we are ready for that particular challenge. And I'm ready to go and stay ready so I don't have to get ready. The other aspect is since it is MLK Day and that is on Monday, folks really don't know that tomorrow is his birthday and we just observe it on the third Monday. And there is a big celebration that is happening at the Buzzkirk on Monday starting at 6:00 PM, put on by the MLK Commission in the city and looking forward to that. I know our commissioners also go and make remarks as well. And there is usually a community award given out to a community resident that embodies MLK's legacy. So that's very interesting. And the last thing, since I'm full of information here, is also congratulations to our newest counselor, Counselor Henry, and looking forward to seeing who the next person we can hand out to for every old council rose to. So they can be seated up here with us as well. So looking forward to having that person be seated and having a full council tackle some of the pressing issues that are going on in our community. The last thing that I just wanted to say is just a little bit of tidbit information. And this is also a month where a lot of the historically black sororities and fraternities also celebrate their Founder's Day. And so yesterday, the ladies of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated celebrated their Founder's Day. And those sororities and fraternities were brought forth for membership because folks that look like me were not allowed in other fraternities and sororities. So shout out to the women of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated for their Founder's Day and my sorority, the best, just kidding. Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated is having their 117th Founder's Day tomorrow. So we are celebrating all service to man con and we do a lot in our community, but looking forward to celebrating that with many pink and green women tomorrow. So without that further ado, this is a record here. We are ending at 6:22 and our meeting is adjourned, y'all. Thank you.